Good evening. Welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for June 6, 2022. We have a motion to go into executive session to review the employment history of particular individuals and negotiations under the Taylor Law.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I oppose. Our motion will go back into public session.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now we're right. Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for June 6, 2022. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for our armed forces and those in our community who have lost loved ones, especially the father of Francesca Baco? Thank you all very much. Thank you for being patient. We're going to move right into our good news, so we'll turn it over to Dr. Hatter.
Hey. Good evening, everyone. If it's okay with the board, I'm just going to give my remarks from the podium. Good evening. It is so wonderful to see so many of you here joining us this evening. Good evening to members of the Board of Education, to my colleagues in the district, both from the district offices and from each of our schools. I thank you for joining us this evening. I would especially like to welcome our wonderful school partners. School Partner Recognition Night is such a special night to all of us, especially to me. You spend so much time doing for our district and doing for the children of Yorktown, and it's wonderful that we can take one night out at a Board of Education meeting to acknowledge you and to say thank you to you. You deal with a lot. There are so many moving parts in your work. You never lose sight of what's most important, which is always the children. I thank you for that. We are going to be honoring all of our groups this evening, and we want to formally acknowledge all of the outstanding work that you do. Everyone is so busy. You're all so busy. You have so many different things pulling on your time, and there are dozens of other ways that you can volunteer your time. I thank you for putting the district and the children of Yorktown first. For this, on behalf of the board, on behalf of my colleagues from central office and from the each of our school buildings, thank you. We appreciate you. In the words of Randy Pausch, showing gratitude is one of the simplest, yet most powerful things humans can do for each other. This evening, we'll be saying thank you to each of our PTA organizations, whether it's district or school-based PTAs, the Alliance for Safe Kids, First Nighters, Foundation for Excellence, Husker Club, and Science Research Foundation, as well as volunteers on this stage, our Board of Education. I will speak a little bit more depth about our Board of Education momentarily, but what I'd like to do is begin by acknowledging each of your groups. There's a very small token of my appreciation, my thanks for all that you do on the table. It's not enough for the entire executive board of your organizations, but whoever's here tonight will be able to grab one bag for two people. There are two items inside of each bag that I hope you'll enjoy, and I hope you'll look at it fondly as just a reflection of all the great things that are happening here in Yorktown, largely because we have such a great community to support the work of our schools. So I'd like to begin, as I wrote in the invitation to each of you, I was going to invite you up to the stage very briefly if you'd like to deliver some remarks about what you're most proud of in the 2021-22 school year. You've done such remarkable things for our children. When you think about what we just experienced dating back to 2020 and then past school year where we inched back gradually, now if you go through our schools, things are starting to feel normal. Field trips have resumed, in-person activities have resumed. There are so many things happening, and as I think about all the contributions that you've made to that, you're the engine that makes it go, and we really appreciate everything that you're doing. So if you'd like to share a few remarks about what you're most proud of in the 21-22 school year, you've done such remarkable things for our children. When you think about what we just experienced dating back to 2020 and then past school year where we inched back gradually, now if you go through our schools, things are starting to feel normal. Field trips have resumed, in-person activities have resumed. There are so many things happening, and as I think about all the contributions that you've made to that, you're the engine that makes it go, and we really appreciate everything that you're doing. So if you'd like to share a few remarks about what you're most proud of in the 21-22 school year, you're welcome to do that. If you'd like to pass, you're welcome to do that, too. I'd like to begin first with our district PTSA, and I won't say much about all of the other groups, but I do want to quickly acknowledge the district PTSA because they have been really a glue that holds all of our organizations together, and Mrs. O'Shea and I, and I think I can speak for Mrs. O'Shea on this, get a lot of joy in those monthly meetings that we have. Whether it was in birthday room number two at Club Fit, or whether it was at French Hill or on a screen on Zoom, we enjoyed the conversation. We enjoyed the camaraderie, the friendship, and the relationships that were around that table, and the honesty. So at this time, I'd like to invite President Liz Ackery up to the podium.
My name is Liz Ackery, as Dr. Hatter said, and I served as district PTSA president this past school year. We feel very fortunate for the great partnership we have, and we wanted to thank the Board of Education, Dr. Hatter, and the administration for taking time to recognize us. I'd also like to thank the district PTSA board, Erin Ropke, Lisa Buchalo, and Lori Kunsaga. For the 2021-2022 school year, we are so very thankful and proud of the administrators, teachers, staff, and parent volunteers that show up every day and put the children first. We are most proud of the students themselves and are so happy to be ending the school year with many fun events and look forward to an even more robust school year next year. Thank you.
And I also want to include trustee Rashmi Bose is the board's liaison to the district PTSA, and I think that she shares in our enthusiasm in those monthly meetings. The three of us enjoy those meetings greatly. Next, I'd like to move into our SEPTA, which is just a phenomenal group, and the work that they do, and the work that they do on behalf of children is remarkable, whether it's a sensory pathway within our school buildings, whether it's something for our children to enjoy at a local park, at Granite Knolls, or all of the other efforts, whether it's the monthly meetings that just provide invaluable information. On behalf of Mr. Rosen, Ms. Almeida, and Mr. Rudick, and all of the principals, we say thank you for everything that you do. So at this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Bindz, Ms. Collins, Ms. Resgiano up and... Okay. Very good.
Hi, everyone. Hi, guys. So tonight, I'm going to try to be really brief, but there is so much that is done throughout the district, and being SEPTA, we're not in one building, and we are district-wide. There are just so many people to thank. So first, I do want to start out by thanking Dr. Hatter, always a huge support for us since day one. Mrs. O'Shea, and I'd like to give a huge shout out to Mrs. O'Shea's secretary, Gloria Ricchio, who is always on hand to constantly approve multiple flyers that we send her. And then obviously, Tom Cole. Mr. Cole, I know we don't have a lot of interaction with you, but I just feel like you're deserving of a thanks for all your hard work, so thank you. And then obviously, to move on to our PPS department, Mr. Mike Rosen and Calon Almeida, they do so much with us, and I think that they have really partnered with us over the past four years. Couldn't be more appreciative of your hard work with us. And obviously, Mrs. Rudick, we're new to working with you, is she even here? But I want to say thank you. All our school psychologists and all our providers within the buildings, and of course, our principals, Mr. DiGennaro, Mrs. Horowitz, Dr. Roberts, Mrs. Amerling, Mrs. Berry, for constantly sharing all of our information via Connect Ed communications or by retweeting our tweets. It all helps us to thrive and be successful. And then finally, our fellow district, or our fellow district PTAs, all of our units. Without you guys, it's almost impossible for us to do our good work. You guys share what we send you. We know we're annoying sometimes. There's a plethora of things that we'd like to get out there, and your partnership with us just truly is what makes us a success. And I just want to kind of close it out for myself in saying that, you know, it really does take a village, and I think I've learned that best from Ms. Elaine over here, is that it really does take a village to provide a robust experience for our kids and our families alike, and I feel that combined, all of our units in this district truly exemplify what it is that means to be a village. So that's it for me.
I just wanted to say quickly, because I know this is going to carry on, thank you again, but because of all your support, we were able to host a few events and fundraisers such as, and it's for the kids. The Adult Paint Night was for the adults, but then there was a Kids Paint Night, and it was such a success, we had to open a second session, which sold out. I mean, these kids had such a great time that night, a winter fun night. We do the IEP Binder Workshop, which helps all incoming special ed students and their parents, and, you know, we had this Gertrude Hauck chocolate fundraiser, I don't know if you remember that one. It was such a success, we were able to get a lot of money that we can put back to the district, and Jessica will talk about that.
In addition to those events, we sponsored the Pioneer League and the Pizza Party. We are most proud of our students, but besides our students is our two graduating senior scholarships that will be in the amount of $1,000 this year, and our building grants, which will each go to each building in the amount of $1,000 totaling $5,000. So thank you all again. This year may have started out difficult, but I think we're ending pretty strongly. So thank you.
We'll share.
Okay. Perfect.
We'll now move into each of our building PTAs, and then we'll move into our larger district organizations. So at this time, I'd like to introduce President of the Brookside PTA, Ms. Christine Dunn.
So I am the one standing here, but, you know, I echo Jamie's comments and most of the other PTA folks, it does take a village. And so my executive board is not up here, and neither are, except Jamie, neither are except all the volunteers that helped at Brookside, but they should be because all together, that's what helped accomplish what we accomplished this year. I just want to add, too, Brookside is absolutely truly an amazing place, and a lot of the PTA is to bring together the school and families, and with all of our volunteers and the great partnership with Mrs. Amerling, we were able to do that this year and make a big difference. And so I also want to thank Mrs. Amerling for the great partnership, and also congratulate you for the big step that you're taking next. And so just quickly, I'm most proud of our, and Jamie Collins, by the way, didn't introduce, she's our treasurer, she's on our executive board. We also have Ally O'Brien, who's our VP, and Callie and Laura Peterson, who are our secretaries. So just quickly, what we're most proud of, or what I'm most proud of, is the outreach this year. Again, a big piece of the PTA is connect the school and the community, and our volunteers helped provide many opportunities, and we were able to provide many opportunities for many parents to be involved and help at school. I personally learned so much from them, and some of that I'm going to take to another nonprofit that's very important to my family. So I'm thankful for the ability to serve as president this year in such a great building and as part of such a great district.
At this time, I'd like to acknowledge the Mohansic PTA, and I'd like to invite PTA President Ron Fidelli to the stage.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Hatter, the members of our Board of Education, administrators, teachers, staff, and colleagues in the PTA that are here tonight. I've always considered it a privilege to serve as a PTA president. I commit myself to continue to represent our district of character humbly and respectfully. My executive board and I are proud of many accomplishments, accomplishments that have been possible because of the partnership we have with our principal, assistant principal, and staff. The members of our board, Erin Ropke, Corinne Felbriller-Judice, Maria O'Connor, Kristen Hickson, Liz Ackery, who's here with me, and I have developed deep friendships. We love to work together for our students. We have dedicated ourselves to create events that are safe, educational, entertaining, and fun. We appreciate the support from all levels as we continue to serve all the children in this district. One of the culminating events this year that we're most proud of fulfilled a running joke that Mrs. Berry and I have had for many, many years. She once asked me after an event, "What's next, Ron? A circus?" Of course, I responded, "One day." Well, last Friday was the day. The circus came to Mohansic, and over 1,000 students, siblings, parents, grandparents, et cetera, came together for the two shows on a beautiful Friday night. We all celebrated. We all were rewarded with a priceless gift, laughs and smiles and memories that will last a lifetime. I thank everyone who made the evening such a success, our principal, our assistant principal, the parent and high school volunteers, but most definitely Craig Nelson, our head custodian, and all the staff from the district who came with chairs and made it so that we could have this event. Without them, we would not have had the event. So again, I thank everyone. I thank everyone for the support, and I look forward to helping the district any way I can. Thank you.
Next, we'll move to the Crompond PTA, and representing the Crompond PTA are Megan Goldstein and Ellen Campana.
Good evening, Dr. Hatter, Board of Education, and Yorktown community. My name is Megan Goldstein, and this year I served on the PTA executive boards of both Crompond and Mildred Eastang Middle School. Tonight, I will share a few things that we accomplished on behalf of myself and the other board members from both schools. The Crompond PTA was excited to bring back community events and rekindle the parent-school connection after COVID. We remained flexible in our planning as the COVID guidelines continued to evolve throughout the year. We were able to host a back-to-school get-together on school grounds in September, a reimagined outdoor fright night in October, and a new spring fling event themed to coincide with Crompond's One School, One Book Choice Wizard of Oz, as well as an end-of-the-year celebration for the fifth grade graduates. We were very happy to also host an in-person book fair in both the fall and spring. The PTA ran a couple of other fundraisers and was able to support the school with some funding for field trips, the Olympic unit in PE, and fourth grade's living history unit, to name a few. We were also thrilled to be able to provide the staff of Crompond with a week of themed snacks and lunch for teacher appreciation to give back to those who work so hard for our kids. The middle school PTA had a goal to bring back students, events, and reintroduce the parent education piece to our community. The PTA arranged for My Remarkable Self to present their workshop titled "Navigating Technology and Social Media" to parents of middle school and fifth grade students. We also collaborated with the school to plan end-of-the-year activities for graduating eighth graders and provided each eighth grader with a shirt to wear on their field trip and a use in high school next year. For the first time, we're hosting an event at Camp Naby for sixth and seventh grade students. We ran some fundraisers this year, including a spiritware sale, and were able to provide the school with funding for things such as indoor recess games and pencils for testing. We also facilitated the purchase of new volleyball nets for the school, thanks to a generous donation from a Yorktown family. We thanked the teachers for their hard work with a staff appreciation luncheon catered by Papoose. In closing, I would like to extend thanks to the administration and the office custodial and security staff of Crompond and Mildred Eastang Middle School for their support and encouragement in making these special events happen.
Mrs. Goldstein was representing Crompond and the middle school this evening, so thank And representing Yorktown High School's PTA, we have Lisa Tominey, Maria O'Connell, and Lori Kunsaga.
Good evening, everyone, and good evening to the Board of Education here. I have with me, I'm Lisa Tominey, I'm the current president of the high school PTSA, and I have with me the president-elect Maria O'Connell, and Lori Kunsaga, the secretary, Megan Whalen, the treasurer, and Lisa Buchalo, the vice president, couldn't be with us tonight but support everything that we have been doing all year long. So the one thing I'd like to say about what we're most proud of having accomplished this year really is strengthening our partnerships in support of our kids, both in terms of resources and being able to celebrate them for all the things that they have endured and continue to rise above, if you will. We sponsored, I guess, at least five guidance events in conjunction with the high school and the Servini in bringing a lot of resources to families in navigating the college application process. We were also able to partner with the Foundation for Excellence and Alliance for Safe Kids in bringing some mental health resources to our students through the Husker Discovery class, and finally, to have a kind of a fun mental health awareness event in May through Kindness Rocks, which we partnered with the clinical staff at the high school to bring a little joy and happiness messages that the kids could create to pass down to their elementary school students that are to follow in their footsteps. And we will be ending the year, I am very pleased to say, by adding an event to the Senior Day, which is Back to the Nest, and sponsoring our seniors to head back to their elementary schools, both Mohansic and Brookside, to walk the halls and be celebrated by their elementary school teachers who are very excited to see them in person and how much they've grown. So we've accomplished a lot, and we hope to solidify and further strengthen our relationships next year and support our students who are always squarely at the center of what we try to do. Thank you so much.
going to start with Alliance for Safe Kids. Is Liz here? I haven't seen Liz. Okay. Well, thank you to the Alliance for Safe Kids for all that they do for our schools. They are such an invaluable resource to not only students but to families. They have just been incredible partners to our school districts, sponsoring some really wonderful programming for families, so we appreciate all that they do. I'll be sure to pass a bag along to Liz Talbert. Representing the First Nighters is Shelby Graff, and I'd like to invite Shelby to the stage at this time.
So for those of you who may not know, the First Nighters are a group of parent volunteers and local patrons who support the performing arts programs in the Yorktown School District. Sorry, I'm a little under the weather. We were so happy to be back in person this year to enjoy all of the fantastic concerts and productions that took place. Through fundraising and member support, we are thrilled to be handing out 14 scholarships tomorrow to graduating senior performers.
We have such a wonderful schools foundation here in Yorktown, and I'm delighted to call Chris Menneka to the stage to represent the foundation. And the VP, Christine Dunn, welcome.
As pretty much everybody else did, I think it's important to thank Dr. Hatter and the rest of the school board for taking the time to recognize the Foundation for Excellence, our board members, Christine Dunn, Mrs. Schluter, and myself, and our other community partners. We all really know each other very well. It's funny how everybody's doing double duty, who's up here for two schools, who's up here for three organizations. It's a tight-knit little group, so we enjoy each other's company. The Foundation for Excellence is a parent-volunteer, not-for-profit. We organize various events throughout the school year, and the funds that we raise help to sponsor teacher grants to enhance the learning experience of the students in our district. As we emerged from the pandemic and tried to get back to the day-to-day of learning, it became clear that our students needed support, and we were very proud to work with the high school PTSA and the Alliance for Safe Kids to present a unit on mental health with the JCK Foundation. The unit was presented to the freshman class almost in its entirety as part of the Husker Discovery Program. The goal was to educate the students on the importance of stress management, learning how to create an environment where students felt comfortable, to talk to their family and their peers about their mental health, and guiding them towards resources if they needed help. And it was very important, I think, as the parents and the students, I think, agree. We are also looking forward to Senior Awards Night tomorrow night. Each, the Foundation for Excellence presents two $1,000 scholarships to two amazing seniors who exemplify excellence in our community. The scholarships are presented in honor of Joan Valenstein. Some of us might remember Joan. She was a tireless volunteer in our community. The Foundation for Excellence, the Alliance for Safe Kids, the Yorktown Community Day, the Yorktown Teen Center, Red Ribbon Week are just a few of the organizations and events that Joan was involved in. And graduating seniors are invited to submit a community involvement resume and an essay that demonstrates a time when they felt that they achieved excellence during their Yorktown Central School District career. We are completely and entirely blown away every single year by the submissions of the students, and it is never an easy task to picket two recipients out of the amazing things that we get from them. Thank you again for the recognition, and we look forward to continuing to serve the Yorktown Community School District community. Yorktown Community School District community.
We are honored to have members of the Huskers Club here tonight for us to recognize and celebrate and give our thanks to. I'd like to invite Chris Vogel, Joanne Baker, Lisa Tominey, Michelle Merlini, Anthony Bucello, Noel DeBellas, Maria Macari, and Ken Weisman to the stage. I don't know if you're all here, but you all signed up.
Dr. Hatter, thank you so much, and the board, thank you for including us this evening. So, just a little history, the Husker Club is a club that dates back to the mid-'70s that supports all of our student athletes. And although the mission has evolved over the years, speaking for all of us, I think it's for love of the game and love of the students that draws us to the club. When we think about some of the things we're probably most proud of in the last year or so, it would be to reopen our concession trailer, which we are opening for more events. It does create a little bit of buzz, whether there's five or six people there or 100 on a Friday night football game, so we're happy to have that. Last year, we did have our Huskers Award Dinner. It's an annual dinner we do to recognize student athletes. We actually had it on the football field last year, and I thought it was a great event. This year, we're back at Putnam Country Club, so we'll be having a dinner next Thursday where we recognize student athletes, and we will award over $6,000 in scholarships. So, the board here, tremendous, couldn't think of a better group to be part of. Joanne Baker, Michelle Merlini, Noel DeBellas, Maria Macari, and Lisa Tominey, new officer, so she's a newbie, but we're trying to do a little better job on the handoff and the overlap. So, thank you so much for thinking of us, and we're pleased to be a part of it.
We have such a terrific performing arts program because we have such terrific teachers in the classroom, terrific students in the classroom, and terrific parental support. Same can be said of athletics. Great coaches, terrific athletic director, great athletes, great children, great people, and great parental support. Our science research program is no different. We have one of the strongest science research programs around, and historically, they have performed so well. And representing the Science Research Foundation, I'd like to invite Mr. Keith Holmes to the stage.
Thank you, Dr. Hatter. On behalf of the board and as a parent of a graduating senior, we wanted to say a special thank you to the administration, to the Board of Ed, to all the teachers and the volunteers for a steady hand through some very, very difficult times. Thank you very much. So, as Dr. Hatter mentioned, the science research program here at Yorktown is in its 20th year. It was led by Michael Blue Glass for eight, founded and led by Michael Blue Glass for 18 years. And the last two years, it was taken over by Paul Rubio and assisted by Dominic Lozo and Kokilots. We really want to express a special thank you to Dr., to Mr. Rubio. In only his second year, and during a pandemic, he held together a program that is highly, highly dependent upon human interaction. The students have to present and make boards, and they did everything by Zoom, and it was really quite an accomplishment for him, and it was. This year, in the 2021-22 school year, we had 37 students, 11 seniors, 14 juniors, and 12 sophomores. Those 37 students were able to win 44 awards, including setting four to the prestigious Genius Olympiad Competition. Of the 11 seniors, this year, they will graduate and we will send two to Northeastern University, one to Ithaca, one to University of Buffalo, Hobart, SUNY D'Anisio, Xavier University, University of Michigan, SUNY Binghamton, Columbia. And they will study such diverse topics as environmental science, computer science, biology, mathematics, pre-med physics. And one female student will attend ROTC on, as a veteran, this is especially dear to my heart, one female student will attend college on ROTC scholarship, so it's a great accomplishment. Next year, for the 2022, oh, sorry, 2223 school year, our program will almost double, right? And we'll have 14 seniors, 12 juniors, and 45 sophomores. So, we're real excited, and I think we came through the pandemic, and the program is in great shape. Thank you very much.
And the final group this evening that I'd like to acknowledge is our Board of Education. They are a group of volunteers who play an integral role in the governance of our district, and they are just wonderful to work with. Yorktown is so fortunate to have seven extremely talented people who so generously and graciously volunteer their time for the betterment of the school district and the betterment of our community. There are many things that you know about our board, especially if you watch the Board of Education meetings. They come together twice a month for anywhere between two and four hours for meetings and work sessions. They ask really thoughtful questions, they provide updates, they approve recommendations, they celebrate the great work happening in the district. But what you don't see, or what you likely don't see, are the three-hour policy meetings that happen monthly, so that the board may ensure that our district sets policy that's consistent with best practice and the ever-changing regulations of the State Education Department. You may not see the hundreds of hours our steering committee invests each year to ensure that our facilities are commensurate with the high-quality education taking place within our walls. You may not see the innumerable hours spent poring over voluminous audit reports to ensure that we are responsible stewards of taxpayer monies. You likely won't see the many hours they invest on weekends to review each and every report, safety inspection, budget document, and memorandum addressed to the school district. We have a terrific, terrific Board of Education here in Yorktown, and I am so fortunate to have the pleasure to work with them. In front of you is a small token of appreciation for the work you do. You all have received them as well, and what they are are coffee mugs with the Yorktown Easteam logo on them. They are, in my estimation, they're much more than just a coffee mug. You all work so hard, and the coffee mug is just symbolic of the work and the tire and the effort that you invest, that you volunteer. You can do a lot of other things with your time, and for our board, it's a thankless job. You can do so many other things with your time, yet you choose to serve your community and serve the children of Yorktown. And the Easteam represents what we established together. And I appreciate you, on behalf of my colleagues from central office, all of our principals, assistant principals, directors, supervisors who are in the audience, and all the staff here, we say that we appreciate you and thank you for everything that you do. Thank you. So, I have certificates for you that I will hand out as well, and just to close, thank you all, I appreciate you coming out. It's a Monday night, I know it's not the easiest thing, there's homework to do, lunches to get ready. I understand the drill, and I appreciate you making the time to be here and to be part of such a special night, where, one night a year, we get to say thank you to the people who provide so much support to our school district. I don't know if there are any other remarks that you'd like to close with, but that concludes my time.
I would just like to thank all of our partners, because a school district doesn't run without partners. It does take a village, and it takes everybody's help, and we are so grateful for every minute that you give to this school district in support of our children, so we just thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Ron, do you want to take a five-minute break?
Yep. So, with that, the board's going to take just a brief five-minute recess. You're welcome to say, I say it all the time, it's a great meeting ahead of us, or you're welcome to depart for the night and get on with your evening. Either way, we thank you for coming out tonight.
We ready? Okay. Ron, thank you very much, that was a very wonderful evening, so thank you for the recognitions for us and especially for our school partners. We're going to move on to public comment, our first public comment on agenda-related items. Did anybody sign up? No? Okay. So, we're going to move back to the superintendent and his update.
Okay. So, first of all, it was so great to see so many of the parents in our community, the volunteers in our community, school partner recognition night is what we call tonight, and it was just... Is my mic on? It is, okay. So, it was just so wonderful to see so many people come out tonight to be recognized for all that they do, just tireless effort and greatly appreciated. With regard to just some of the end-of-the-year items, and before I get to the end-of-the-year items, I just want to acknowledge the tragedy in Uvalde, Texas, and how this gut-wrenching and senseless that whole situation is and was. What I said in my letter to the community, and I did send out a letter on that evening, May 24th, it often, an incident like that, a tragedy like that, makes you reflect on what school safety measures are in place within our buildings, and I addressed many of the school safety measures that we take. There are some things that I am able to discuss, and then there are other things that would compromise the safety operation in our school district. But please know that we do review our protocols, and it's something that we're obviously very sensitive to and very aware of, and we appreciate our partnership with the Yorktown Police Department. We thank them for all of their support and all that they do for our school district, and we continue to make sure that our schools are as safe as they possibly can be. With regard to some of the other items that I just want to address, the end of the year's approaching, our students will head into summer, and I hope they'll head into a happy and safe summer and enjoy friendships and family and each other. We will have lots of activities happening on our campuses. We have a summer reading program that will happen under the leadership, well, Mrs. O'Shea created it, Mrs. O'Shea planned it, but by the time the program begins, Mrs. O'Shea, it will not be under Mrs. O'Shea's leadership, but I thank her for all of the effort that went into planning such a wonderful program for children to just help in areas of reading and writing. We have our extended school year program under the leadership of Mr. Rosen and the PPS Department, and they do a tremendous job. And before we get there, there are so many different events on the calendar that we're mindful of. We do have our high school awards night tomorrow evening. We do have the Triumph Honor Society Function Event on Thursday, June 9th. We have our senior day, last day of classes for our high school students. Last day of classes for our seniors is June 10th. That's always a bittersweet day for us here in the district. We are looking at graduation and moving up season. The following week will begin with some of our moving up ceremonies, and that week will culminate on Saturday, June 25th, with the high school graduation. High school graduation will take place on our campus. We tried the venue change last year, and it was very well-received, and we decided to continue with that approach for this coming school year. So, high school graduation will be on the Turf Field, on Charlie Murphy Field, right here on the Yorktown High School campus. I also want to acknowledge... I also want to acknowledge students in our athletics program. The spring seasons at this point have all come to a close, and what I was most proud of is that our students, their coaches represented us, Yorktown, so well. They represented us with pride, with honor, and they really respected the why that was on their jersey. We had a number of scholar-athlete teams. We had a Con Edison Award winner in softball. We, just tremendous success both on and off the field, and my congratulations to our students. I also want to acknowledge our performing arts program. We had one-act plays happening last week. We've had beautiful concerts to close out the school year in each of our schools, and they have just been so uplifting and so heartening to hear our children perform after what has been anything but a typical last two years. The opportunity to see our children return to in-person performances, to see the smiles on their faces, we have a lot to be proud of. Our next concert that I'll be attending is the Brookside Americana Concert, which is our first grade students singing all patriotic music. And I'm looking forward to that. It's June 14th. It's on Flag Day, and it should be just a wonderful, wonderful event at Brookside. For my senior citizen group with whom we meet and members of the Board of Education meet, I did notify you by email, but if you're watching this and you haven't checked your email, we have to reschedule the 17th. We have Crompons Moving Up Ceremony, so I will get back to you on a date. We'll get together over the summer for breakfast, coffee, and I'll give you another update of all the good work happening in our school district. But I'm so sorry that we're not going to be able to hold the 17th date, but more information will follow. Check your email, or you can ask a friend and they'll let you know what the new date is. It hasn't been scheduled yet, but once it is scheduled, they'll let you know. And I just want to close the way I started by saying thank you. This board is just phenomenal. And we are fortunate, I think our community realizes how fortunate we are to have such devoted people leading our district and governing our district and really working with one focus, well, two focuses. What's good for children and how can we be responsible stewards of taxpayer money. So I just thank you for everything that you do. And that concludes my update.
Thank you. I'm going to move on to some board action items. The annual organization meeting date. Whereas the New York State education law requires that the district's annual organizational meeting be held on the first Tuesday in July unless the Board of Education by resolution designates another date for the meeting within the first 15 days in July. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education designates July 11th, 2022 at 5:30 PM as the date in time for the annual organizational meeting.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. And then can I have a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting calendar for the 2223 school year?
So moved.
Discussion. I just wanted to say thank you. We have good news back on the calendar. So it's going to be a great year. All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Personnel. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion that the following be approved. We have under-certified personnel appointments, part-time appointments, and temporary appointments, extended school year appointments, other compensation. We have a change in rate. We have an addition to the substitute list, and we have some resignations under classified personnel. We have extended school year appointments, stipends that are non-district funded, additions to the substitute list, and some removals from the substitute list.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Business. Resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education authorizes the execution of the 2223 initial contract for Putnam Northern Westchester Bosse's Services.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. A motion to approve the cross-contract with Eastern Suffolk Bosse's for bold election management services for the 2223 school year. The cost of this service is $10,231.45.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. A motion to approve the nicer general liability policy renewal for the 2223 school year, the premium in the amount of $331,428.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. A motion to approve the storage tank liability insurance policy renewal, including terrorism insurance coverage for the 2223 school year, the premium in the amount of $20,906.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. A motion to establish the rate of pay of $22 per hour for school monitors hired for safety slash security of programs being held on the Yorktown Central School District campus during the 2022 summer.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. A motion to approve the following tax cerchery resolution by order of the Supreme Court of the State of New York held in for the County of Westchester on the 17th day of May 2022. A tax refund in the amount of $4,855.59 is due to Cat Hill Associates LLC for the tax year of 2021.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. A motion to approve the budget transfers that are listed below.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Curriculum. A motion to approve the professional development plan for the 21 through 23 school year.
So moved.
Discussion. Do you want to talk about this one?
Yes. So I'll turn it over to Mrs. O'Shea to give you an overview of the plan.
So our teachers, our administrators, our staff, very much welcome the opportunity to come together to learn about best practices in teaching and learning. So what I wanted to do tonight is to just share with you an update to our plan, talk about some of the goals we worked on this year and goals that we're going to be working into next school year on as well. Next slide, Yvette. So the professional development opportunities are a requirement of the New York State Education Department, and they must be aligned to improve outcomes for students. This plan is aligned with professional development, I'm sorry, professional development opportunities. I'm sorry, I canceled my notes. Hold on. Professional development opportunities are funded through a combination of the general district budget, through federal and state grants, and through a partnership with the Northern Westchester Putnam Teacher Center. Our plan for professional development supports the goals for students as I defined in our vision, mission, and our core beliefs. We want our students to cultivate empathy, promote critical thinking and innovation, focus on the whole child, and prepare students for success in the global community. When we consider areas of interest for our professional development or areas of focus, we review certain performance data for students. We look at the New York State Report Card, the New York State and District Assessments that we design. We look at attendance, graduation, and dropout rates, as well as referrals and participation data in academic intervention services and special education. We offer professional development that's internal to our district as well as external to our district, things that happen on the outside. Our internal sources of professional development are new teacher orientation. We do mandatory regulation compliance training for teachers. We do crisis response and emergency management training, continuing teacher and leader education, or CTE hours, as they're called. We have a professional improvement plan, which is a partnership with the Yorktown Congress of Teacher for providing professional development. So much of our internal professional development utilizes the existing experience of our teachers and some of our leaders within our district. They work together to stay current in curriculum and standards and best practices, and much of this professional collaboration happens throughout the course of the general school year, whether it be grade level, team, or department meetings, faculty and staff meetings. We have a mentoring program. We have superintendent's conference days where a lot of curriculum work is done. We offer summer curriculum work, which is a big chunk of time that our teachers dedicate over the summer to improving their craft and learning about where we need to go to continue the great work of the district. We also have specialists within our district who help administer some of this professional development. We work with our regional partners as well as outside consultants to provide topic-specific professional development. So we use Putnam Northern Westchester Bosse's. We also use Southern Bosse's. We use Delric. We have teacher center courses that we work on. And then we have outside consultants that we contract with. And there's a list of outside consultants there, and some of the areas that they're touching on are integrated co-teaching strategies for our special education programs. We have behavioral consultants that work on behavior interventions. We have guided reading practices, literacy instruction, mental health supports. So those are some of the external areas that we cover. This is just a, obviously, it's your board goal for curriculum and instruction, so I thought that it would be important to put that there. So some of the goals that we started working on this year and will continue into next year. So the first goal will allow us to provide training and support in the implementation of the next generation standards for ELA in mathematics and for science. Will also give us an opportunity to build awareness on the new computer science standards that we talked about, which will be required to begin implementation in the schools in the 2023-24 school year. We also provide opportunities for teachers to collaborate and ensure vertical and horizontal alignment of the curriculum. Goal two will allow us an opportunity to establish and train school-based data teams as a central structure for ensuring that data-driven instruction occurs in classroom level. Goal three is going to give us an opportunity to explore and examine theory, practices, and resources related to tiered interventions for students regarding academic, executive functions, social, emotional, and behavioral needs. Slide eight. Goal four will give us the opportunity to provide teachers with tools needed to effectively integrate technology within instruction and to give opportunities for teachers to collaborate to develop and implement esteemed learning experiences. Ms. Forsberg is certainly central to this work, as is our instructional technology specialists. Goal five provides educators with the knowledge and skills to create a respectful, supportive, and trusting learning environment for all students, which is of course critical to our mission and our vision. And goal six is specific to some of our specialists. So we're looking to provide special education, ENL, reading, and AIS teachers with training on a variety of reading programs geared to remediate specific reading problems. Some of those are preventing academic failure, leveled literacy intervention are just some that we're focusing on this year and next year. So that gives you kind of an overview of the professional learning plan. When we look for areas of focus, it's something that is not stagnant. We continually meet with our curriculum council, with our building administrators, and with our teachers to really fine-tune some areas of which we're going to really put our effort in for any given year. There are smaller levels of professional development that don't impact a large variety of teachers that are not really highlighted here. So for example, our new data science class, the teacher doing that is going to have some, quite a bit of professional development over the summer. Same thing for our civil engineering course that we're having. So there's smaller opportunities for professional development, and then where we work as a larger district.
Thank you. Did you have any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Can you give us a look behind the curtain on the superintendent's conference day? Is that just a day off, a break from the kids? Like, what is it?
So superintendent's conference day is days that we really look forward to as a district because we have opportunities to bring teachers together that we don't typically have when they're school in session. So at the start of the school year, we have two days. This year, we have three coming up. Some of it is building levels specific to professional development that's happening in each building, and there are opportunities for district-level work as well. So depending on the goals of the professional development for that school year, there are scheduled professional development opportunities for teachers throughout the day. It's not a day off.
Go ahead, Joe.
I know we typically use student data to identify professional development. Can you give us an example of how we've used that in identifying professional development areas?
So when we looked at our data for students who are struggling with reading at K5, particularly at the, during COVID, we realized that we had a large number of students who were not meeting grade-level expectations in reading. And they were receiving AIS services, but we weren't seeing the progress that we typically would in any other given years in the past. So we purchased an intervention system for all of our K8 reading teachers called leveled literacy intervention. But you can't do something and expect a good outcome without providing intense professional development for teachers. So we have a consultant who's worked with us all this year and will continue next year, working towards helping the reading teachers identify specific reading goals for students and what would the intervention look like to meet the goals for that student. So that's one area that we noticed, our AIS numbers is a result of, you know, some of the issues related to COVID. And we responded as soon as we saw that happening.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Rachel?
Yeah, so I think one of the consultants that was listed is for the data science course that we are starting in the fall for a semester. I mean, it will be started in the fall, but the course is lasts a semester every year. So do we have specific goals for the consultants? Or do we know what they'll be helping us with?
So this is a timely question. At next week's board meeting, there'll be a contract for the consultant for the data science course. We are working through UCLA to provide that training for our teachers and some of the curriculum for that program as well. And there's a certain number of days involved. There's summer training, and then there's days throughout the school year as a check-in and a support for implementing the classes that goes along.
Thank you.
Lisa, can you talk about the mentor program that we have?
So we have a formal mentor program that meets the needs of teachers who have initial certification. And that formal mentor program is very prescribed. We have a mentor coordinator who meets with the mentor-mentee teams throughout the year. They work on our expectations for teacher evaluation and what we expect in good lesson planning. They work on creating a portfolio. They learn about project-based learning and things that are important to us as a district. We also have informal mentoring for teachers who are not new teachers, but are new to Yorktown. And then we also have informal mentoring for teachers who are here in Yorktown but might be teaching a class that they've never taught before, and we hook them up with teachers who have had that experience. What I will say about Yorktown, which is so wonderful, is that our teachers really care about the success of their colleagues. And so there is that collective effort to help people succeed.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
So one of our goals is providing PD for advancing mental health for our students. Can you speak more about that?
The mental health?
Yeah.
So I believe Mr. Rosen mentioned a few meetings back, we have noticed, again, looking at our student data, we've noticed that the number of students who are suffering from severe mental health issues and many requiring hospitalizations, that number has increased for us. And it has resulted in us needing to be able to respond. How can we help that student transition back to the school after a hospitalization while navigating the adolescent world, the social interactions, academic pressures? How can we provide support to those students? And what tools do we give our clinical staff and our high school staff to be able to do that? So we are doing contracting with Brookside Corporation, Bright is the name of the program that they run. And Mr. G. Gennaro and Mr. Rosen are working with the clinical teams to support developing a program. So at the end of this year, we're working with that organization to develop what a framework for a program could look like, and then they'll help us implement that program and those interventions upon this next school year when we fully roll it out.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you very much.
So can you approve my plan?
Yes. So can I have a motion in a second? So all those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
All right. You got it, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Special ed. A motion to approve the following placements as of June 6, 2022?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. And gifts, grants, and donations. So this is long. A motion to accept with gratitude the following gifts, grants, and donations. At Brookside, $46 from the Brookside PTA for field trips. $1,500 from First Central Savings Banks for materials and supplies for the Green Initiative at Brookside School. A Mohansec, a wall climbing equipment from the Mohansec PTA for the Mohansec Gymnasium with an estimated cost to the district of $150 for wall painting and the pieces that the Mohansec PTA is supplying is listed below. At Crompon, $1,737.54 from the Lackon Giving Fund by its agent, Your Cause, for garden renovations at Crompon School on behalf of the New York Life. At Yorktown High School Athletics, $500 from Westchester County Foundation, Joseph Dischali Memorial Scholarship Fund, and $500 from Westchester County Foundation Coach Rupert.
Dischali Memorial Scholarship Fund, and $500 from Westchester County Foundation Coach Ruby Memorial Baseball Scholarship Fund. And at Yorktown High School, $500 from the Black Bond Giving Fund by its agent, Your Cause, for Yorktown High School on behalf of IBM.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. We're up to board comments. I'll start with Lisa.
Yeah. So, first of all, today, tonight was awesome. Thank you so much for doing that every year, Dr. Hatter. The partners in our community are so important to us, and, you know, I think both Cheryl and Rashmi and I got our roots in those organizations, so very grateful to them. Lisa, was that your last Board of Education presentation?
No.
Oh! Next week! And finally, just to piggyback on to Dr. Hatter's comments about what happened in Uvalde. Tragic, tragic events, hard to watch, hard to listen to the stories, but I'm also somewhat comforted to know what we do here at Yorktown Central School District to keep those kids safe, because that is the most important thing we can do. So, thank you, Dr. Hatter, to you and your team for making that a priority. Joe?
I just wanted to say thank you, Dr. Hatter, for acknowledging our community partners tonight. As Lisa had pointed out, many of us have had our roots grounded in those organizations, and we know how much work that they put in and how sometimes there's a struggle to find people to staff some of the positions in the Huskers' trailer, whether it's the First Nighters table outside of our auditorium here. It's a lot of work, and we truly do appreciate it because they provide some of the opportunities for our children through their fundraising efforts and from just being here to make our wonderful events that much richer. So, we really do appreciate them, and thank you for hosting the night tonight, Dr. Hatter.
Rashmi?
We are so fortunate to have a great group of volunteers that help out in all these various organizations. They enrich the students and their experiences a lot. Well, thank you, Dr. Hatter, for having them here, not just tonight, but every year. I know you also said some kind words about the board, and to my colleagues on the board, it's really a pleasure to work with you all. We often debate things. We don't agree on everything, but I think that's the beauty of having diversity of thought on the board, and I really enjoy that partnership that we all have. So, thank you all.
Mike?
I'll echo everyone's sentiments and say, you know, congra- thank you to all of our community partners. I would also just encourage those of you out in the community that aren't involved to think about getting involved in some of these organizations because they truly are very important and valuable, and as you can probably tell from the people that walked up here, there's a very small group of people that do a lot of the heavy lifting. So, the more people that can get involved, I think the better it is for all of us in the community. So, thank you again.
I echo what everybody said. I wanna piggyback on what Rashmi was talking about with diversity of thought. It's actually a wonderful thing to be able to debate different things and to come to a common conclusion after we've heard all points of view and, you know, hear what everybody has to say, and I think that makes us a stronger board because we do hear each other and listen to each other. So, I'm appreciative to all of you for that. And I wanna thank our community partners. We couldn't do what we do without them, and they are tremendous, and we thank them from the bottom of our hearts. So, Ron, Tom, Lisa? Nope? Okay. Board comment number two? Is that? Nope. Public comment, that's what I meant. Yeah, no more board comments. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.